Okay, I'd like to call to order the joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council, the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, and the Glendale Housing Authority for October 12th, 2010. May we have the roll call for council, please?
Council members, Drayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Miren, Jarian.
Sure.
For the Housing Authority, roll call, please.
Authority members, Drayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Minnsey.
Here.
Jarian.
Here.
Brazian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Quintero.
Here.
And for the Redevelopment Agency.
Agency members, Drayman.
Here.
Jarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Friedman.
Still here.
Thanks. Agenda for the October 12th, 2010, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council, the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, October 7th, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. The item before you is director of planning regarding consideration of alternatives for a green building policy and implementation in the city of Glendale. That one is council motion providing direction to staff.
Mr. Foy.
Yes, thank you. This follows up on a discussion we had with the council earlier this year where we were asked to convene a citizens' task force to gather input on several options for what could be a green building policy in Glendale. And you have a brief presentation by three of the staff people who were very instrumental in putting together this task force and, you know, fashioning discussion items for them. Stephanie Reich, our senior urban designer in the planning section, Stuart Tom, the building official, and Mike Fortney from Community Redevelopment and Housing.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council, agency, housing authority members. As Mr. Foy mentioned, we were here last in January to discuss green building. At council's direction, staff reviewed the California Green Building Code, known as CalGreen, organized a green building task force, which included a wide variety of stakeholders, and we facilitated three meetings to discuss various options. Attached to the staff report is a listing of all those invited and all those who attended each of those three meetings. The task force agreed to use the California Green Building Code, CalGreen, as a vehicle for the city's green building policy rather than mandating a separate rating system. That was one of the strong recommendations that came out of the task force. So they recommended using CalGreen rather than LEED or Greenpoint rated. Those were the systems that we looked at last time we were here in January. The task force reasoned that since CalGreen will be adopted statewide effective January 1st, 2011, it would be much simpler and more uniform to use CalGreen as a starting point. Similarly, other cities in the region we talked with have previous -- that have previously adopted other green building policies are instead tailoring the CalGreen code to match their current requirements. The group then reviewed the CalGreen code in more detail to consider ways to match the needs and goals to those of the city of Glendale. These were lively discussions where many points of view were expressed. In some areas, there was strong interest in mandating additional specific requirements, while in others, there were differing opinions. An attachment to the staff report includes a summary of those discussions. Based on the input received from the task force, the following options are listed for your consideration. Option one, to adopt the mandatory standards outlined by CalGreen as required by the state of California to go into effect January 1st, 2011. Whatever you decide today, the state requires that we implement CalGreen mandatory requirements for implementation by January 1st, 2010. Stuart Tom, our building official, will briefly discuss option one. Option two is to adopt mandatory standards outlined by CalGreen with additional voluntary standards. Mike Fortney will briefly discuss option two and what we've heard from the task force in more detail. Alternatively, you can elect to adopt an independent rating system such as LEED or Greenpoint rated in addition to the state requirements included in CalGreen. I'll come back to discuss this option and wrap up. It became clear during the task force meetings that discussions encompassed a wide range of technical issues with which most of the task force members were relatively unfamiliar, so additional dialogue may be required. Council may wish to consider additional outreach with a facilitator skilled in green building policy to assist the task force to develop a more comprehensive understanding of the issues, particularly if council wishes to mandate requirements over and above what's included in the CalGreen code. So I'll turn it over to Stuart Tom to present a little bit more about CalGreen.
Good afternoon. I'll try to keep this brief, and if there are any questions, I'll be happy to address them at the conclusion of this presentation. Every three years, the state of California adopts a new set of codes, replacing previous standards with newer and improved standards. Commonly referred to as California Building Standards Code or California Title 24, this set includes very familiar codes such as the Building Code, the Fire Code, Plumbing, Mechanical, and Electrical Codes. It also includes less familiar codes, which are still part of Title 24, including the California Energy Code, California Historical Building Code, California Administrative Code, and the Reference Standard Code. Through its constant update process, this code has come to be recognized as the most advanced building standards code in the country. As Stephanie has indicated, this adoption cycle, California has added a 12th part to Title 24. On January 12th of this year, California Building Standards Commission unanimously adopted CalGreen into the state code, thereby establishing the first and only statewide mandatory green building standards code in the nation. As Stephanie has indicated, CalGreen will take effect on January 1st of 2011. Now, prior to its adoption, hundreds of stakeholders throughout California participated in determining which green building standards should be mandatory for all new construction. Representatives from the U.S. Green Building Council, Build It Green, Sierra Club, Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, local government, the Building Industry Association, or BIA, and other organizations provided input into what was ultimately adopted into the mandatory CalGreen standards. Their input also contributed to additional standards that have set the course for an ever-improving systematic evolution of CalGreen through California's triennial code adoption and replacement process. Just as California has systematically augmented its seismic design standards to make structures more resistant to earthquake damage, the state has now made similar commitment toward a systematic addressing of the need for sustainable construction practices in our future. As California learns how green building regulations will affect California builders, homeowners, and businesses, and how green building regulations will affect us, and when the quality and availability of sustainable construction materials is augmented, these standards will become more robust over the coming three-year cycles. For now, however, the CalGreen standards will apply to new construction and will focus on five primary areas. These are the areas that will mandatorily be affected coming January 1st of next year. Number one is planning and design. The second area is energy efficiency. The third area is water efficiency and conservation. The fourth area is material conservation and resource efficiency, and the fifth is environmental quality. The standards have now established a baseline that new construction will need to achieve or such projects will not be issued a building permit, and such projects will not receive a final inspection approval. This new threshold will commence in just over two months, on January 1st. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Mike Fortney, our next speaker, who will briefly discuss additional standards that may be considered for mandatory compliance should this council see it necessary. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them at the conclusion of this report.
Well, before you do, I have a question.
Certainly.
Would you repeat those five, please? You went right down the line. Same.
Certainly. Those five are, number one, planning and design; number two is energy efficiency; number three is water efficiency and conservation; number four is material conservation and resource efficiency; and number five is environmental quality.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council and Housing Authority Board members. I'm Mike Fortney, your housing project manager. I want to talk about option two, which is to adopt the mandatory standards and then some of the standards above and beyond mandatory that the task force had talked about during our three meetings. I want to start it just to mention that we had invited 42 people to join the task force. At the first meeting, I believe 30 members showed up according to the minutes. And in that meeting, really, the direction was kind of steered towards, do we go with CalGreen, as Stephanie alluded to, or do we look at LEED, or do we look at Greenpoint rated as the policy that Glendale should follow? So it was a big decision there that we should probably follow CalGreen, seeing how everyone throughout the state is going to have to start with that minimum to begin with. And then in the second meeting, we broke into small groups where we wanted to get more focused attention on some of the items within CalGreen and whether or not they wanted to go to Tier One or even Tier Two, or if they wanted to stay at minimum. So we did do that. Again, 26 members of the task force were at that meeting. And some of the things that they talked about were energy efficiency, indoor air quality, water efficiency, and then scope. And I apologize. And lastly, commissioning. My group, which I could speak to probably best, is the energy efficiency. To adopt minimum or to adopt the mandatory standards for CalGreen would be to not increase -- not go above Title 24 at all. Tier One would be to go above Title 24 by 15 percent, and Tier Two would be 30 percent over Title 24. And if you'll recall, LEED, the very minimum for LEED and the very minimum for Greenpoint rated is 15 percent. So the CalGreen Tier One, at least on energy efficiency, is equivalent to those two. What we use really as a discussion for whether or not we should just go with CalGreen mandatory or Tier One or even Tier Two was a report that was done. It was entitled Climate Zone Nine Energy Cost Effectiveness Study, and that was attached to your report. And I just want to summarize real, you know, briefly what that study looked at. It looked at six different building types, four residential and two commercial. It looked at small, single-family home, a large, single-family home, and then low-rise multifamily, high-rise multifamily, then low-rise office and high-rise office. And I'm happy to define any one of those more specifically if you're interested. But what it did, it looked at what the overall cost and what the cost per square foot would be to go to Tier One and -- oh, actually, just to Tier One, 15 percent over Title 24. And those numbers are between $1,200 and $16 to $1,742 for a single-family home. And I won't go through every one of these options. For low-rise multifamily, that's a two-story unit, the total project cost increase would be between $6,446 and $7,634. That's between 76 cents and 90 cents a square foot. And then lastly, I just mentioned the high-rise office. And of course, I have the numbers for all these scenarios if you're interested. High-rise office, which was defined in the report as a five-story, 52,900-square-foot building, the overall cost to that -- to exceed Title 24 by 15 percent was almost $40,500 on the low end to $88,500 on the high end, which translates to at least 77 cents a square foot to about $1.66 a square foot. Another thing that the report did was it looked at how many years it would take to pay back those costs based on assumptions that it made on utility costs. And for a single-family, small home, it was about 15 years. On the high-rise office, the return on that investment was as short as 4.6 years on average. And then high-rise multifamily is about 11.7 years on average. I just wanted to mention the high-rise multifamily for a moment. That was a four-story, 40-unit. Being the housing project member of the city, that's the building type I'm most familiar with. You're probably aware that most of our buildings that have been built in the last three years do exceed Title 24 by at least 15 percent, some more. And all the ones that are under construction now or will be in construction will exceed that number. But it was one project in particular, Gardens on Garfield, that was not designed to exceed Title 24 at all. It came in a tenth of a percent or something, just over code. So that project, we worked with the developer to get it to 15 percent or more. And so I just wanted to say from our experience, although all the numbers aren't in yet, the number that I quoted between $20,000 to $30,000 overall project cost is really close to what we experienced with that Gardens on Garfield project, to bring it from zero, which is how it was designed, to get it to 15 percent over. I just wanted to mention that. But then, other items that the task force talked about as far as exceeding Title -- or exceeding CalGreen mandatory, indoor air quality. There was some discussion about exceeding indoor air quality. In particular, there were members of the task force that were in favor of a two-week flush-out period for new construction buildings. It was never a large number of folks that were really strongly advocating for that, but there were a number of folks that were interested in that. Water efficiency, there again, some of the task force members were interested in meeting Tier One standards, which is 30 percent reduction requirements versus the 20 percent, which is the mandatory standard. And in scope, the CalGreen does not -- it applies to new construction. There was some discussion of whether or not the scope of the policy should be to substantial rehabilitation of existing buildings. And the discussion really centered around, you know, trying to figure out at what threshold do you make a building that's going through rehab, make it meet the new CalGreen code or our local green code versus not having to do that. So, and some of the discussion really was, if the construction cost for the new rehabilitation was 50 percent or more of the replacement value of the building, then you would apply the standards. And then lastly, was commissioning. There was a talk of commissioning. In CalGreen, it does mandate, I apologize, that there be some sort of commissioning, but it's not very specific as to how you get there. It doesn't require that you go out and get a third-party person. In fact, somebody from the development team could serve as the commissioner on the project to commission that these elements of the CalGreen policy were, in fact, implemented. There was some discussion from the task force members that this be an independent person. So those are the main things that stood out from the task force discussions of items that could -- you could adopt that would exceed the mandatory standards. I'll turn it back over to Stephanie.
Thank you, Mike. So for option number three, council may choose to apply an independent rating system in addition to the CalGreen requirements. You may choose to apply these to larger-scale buildings or redevelopment area projects or city projects. There aren't any surrounding cities that we talked to that are continuing to work with the LEED rating system. I believe there may be a couple of cities in Northern California that will continue to go with the LEED rating system for buildings that surpass a certain threshold. So there are some cities that have had those policies in place in Northern California that will maintain those policies. We couldn't find anyone in Southern California that would continue to go with the LEED intent policies. So as I mentioned, the task force did identify CalGreen as the most appropriate way to implement green building for consistency and predictability for our customers primarily. And they reasoned since that the city would be already implementing CalGreen, it would be consistent and make more sense to go with one system and to tailor it as necessary. As far as the surrounding cities that we talked to, Los Angeles has appeared to have already adopted their CalGreen policy, and they have adopted a couple of minor requirements in addition to the mandatory CalGreen. All new construction will be required to be solar-ready. In addition, Los Angeles has broadened the scope so that CalGreen will apply to include renovations and additions of greater than $200,000 valuation. The city of Pasadena, which has already been rigorously implementing their LEED intent policy, will be abandoning that LEED intent policy and tailor their CalGreen policy so that it will closely match what they were implementing with the LEED intent policy. And they will perhaps broaden those thresholds, but they haven't adopted their policy yet, so we're not exactly sure. The city of Santa Monica had been implementing a local code for many years, and they will also look to the CalGreen to modify that, to include additional mandatory requirements that will closely match or enhance their existing green building policy. So with that, we'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councilman Friedman.
Just a couple of questions. First, Stephanie, I'm a little confused by the wording in the three options.
Okay.
The second option refers to adopting mandatory standards outlined by CalGreen with additional voluntary standards. Is that saying that we would just make it voluntary for people to go beyond? Because if so, then option one and option two seem to be the same option. Or is it -- or are you saying that we would impose mandatory additional standards?
I'm glad you asked that question. Thank you for that. As Stuart mentioned, included in the CalGreen code was a series of voluntary standards, Tier One, that are referred to as Tier One and Tier Two. So council may include some of those voluntary standards in the mandatory requirements and adopt them as code if you wish.
So in other words, they wouldn't be adopted as voluntary standards. They would be adopted as mandatory standards?
That's right. They're already existing in the CalGreen code as voluntary. You can choose to make them mandatory.
I understand. I was confused by the wording, by saying adopting voluntary standards. Now, maybe, can you just outline -- it's in the staff report, but I just want so that the public understands that the CalGreen as proposed, and if we adopted just CalGreen, does not apply to the majority of what we have as building in Glendale. So can you outline briefly, again, what it does and does not apply to?
And I may need to turn this over to Stuart. But CalGreen does apply to all new construction, including single-family residential. It does not apply to renovations and additions. There is a piece in the report that describes that there is a gap in the CalGreen that CalGreen does not cover low-rise multifamily. And so, we did not talk about that in the verbal presentation, but there has been a consensus among building officials, that Stuart can speak to, to include those buildings as part of the mandatory standard.
Okay.
Stuart.
Just a clarification. Stephanie mentioned that CalGreen does not apply to low-rise. I think what she meant to say is it does not apply to high-rise residential. CalGreen, as she indicated, applies to all single-family dwellings, new, and all non-residential buildings, so all offices, retail, industrial warehouses, and so forth. There is a hole in the code, which is one of the items that I believe Mike Fortney addressed, and that is that to be consistent with the residential standards that HCD adopted, CalGreen applies to multifamily residential structures up to and including four stories in height. Where the hole comes into play is residential buildings above four stories. So if they're five stories and higher, and they fall into that high-rise category, between five stories and there's an upper limit, it may be eight stories, I'm not sure. There is at this time a gap, and it's not going to be closed until the next triennial California cycle. So that is one of the items that if this council sees fit to plug that hole, I would recommend that we impose something here locally that would ensure that those multi-story residential structures are included as well. But clearly, the majority of all new construction, whether it's residential and commercial, would be covered by CalGreen, whether you adopt new standards or not. It's only that small hole.
Okay. And then there was unanimous consent in the task force to include those. So that's...
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I have a quick question for Stuart. You've got a podium. How many floors can you go with wood construction? Is it five or six?
Typically, it's four.
Four is a max.
That's correct.
So when we go to affordable housing, the incentive now you have five.
Friedman.
One of the question, this is maybe a difficult question, you don't have to answer it, but in your experience in the building industry over these many years, do you believe that mandating parts of the Tier One would be completely cost prohibitive to a building in Glendale?
No. I think that depending on which features this council saw fit to impose, it could still be done in a cost-effective manner. It will add to the construction cost, but that would simply be something that a developer would need to consider when doing business here in Glendale.
Okay. Thank you.
And when we talk about those additional requirements and features, when is that -- is that something that is before us today, or is that subject for a future discussion?
It's certainly something that could be considered today if there were certain key features that you felt were of such importance that you wanted to give us direction to make sure that we included it. We'll go back and make sure that that's included in whatever we adopt. If you would like us to spend more time in investigating some of what is currently voluntary to make it mandatory, we'll spend whatever time you request us to, to come back with additional standards. I would like to point out that in about one month, we will be coming before you for adoption of our next code cycle, and what it appears that we will be doing is simply staying silent on any additional green building standards, if you would like us to research it more, which means that we won't miss an opportunity. We will have green building come January 1st. If any time after that you see fit to augment that, we can have an ordinance, and we can bolster those standards from that point forward.
Okay. I do have a card from Stephanie Landrigan. Why don't we hear from her, and then we'll come back for more discussion. Council.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council, agency, and housing members. I'm Stephanie Landrigan. I'm a licensed landscape architect and a LEED AP, and I was on the task force. And I think the task force was very lively, but I think that it was a bit conservative. And I would like to point out a couple of things that I would like you to consider, and I think staff has given you some good options. Most of the task force, I would say, was not familiar with any of the green codes that were proposed. So it was a learning curve, and in that manner, I think that the discussion was somewhat limited. And when staff has proposed an option two, that an individual carry on further workshops, it would be a person who is not staff, because staff has a difficulty in being both the regulator of policy and the proposer of policy when they talk here. And it's hard for those of us who are in the task force to maybe separate those two. So I do think that's an excellent suggestion if you choose to go with option two. The other point I'd like to bring up is it only covers new construction, and we live in a city where only the hard places are left to develop. I'm saying that honestly. We have infill projects, and we have new buildings, and we've excluded them out of this. And I think that's a very big lost opportunity. So I would like you to remember that when we talk about it, because we're talking about Glendale and not just a general code. So within the county, the other cities, some other cities have already enacted green codes. This will be our first enactment. And so, we are not a leader by far. We're sort of behind. So I'm asking us to look at this as being up there in the forefront with those leaders who have gone forward. First, let's look at life cycle. Staff recommends that if Tier One is considered, they -- we should have this outside firm. I think that we should consider some of the Tier One options. And the reason I think so is we are proposing in your council meeting coming up, a rate increase for water. And inside of this code is an opportunity for us to enact cost savings through cost savings and water-saving features and fixtures, which are in Tier One. They're not in the mandatory element. If you look at page 88, and I'll bring it to your attention, all of the cost-saving issues that are related to water are in Tier One. They're not in the mandatory level there. So the elements that we need to think about is what is the cost saving in the long run? If you're a builder, if you build a building, or if you build a garden, you hope for the future because you're making it for someone else at another time, and you're doing that investment. So by looking at what are the cost savings for the user, and not just for the developer, you come up with a life cycle balance. And I think that you can substantiate that heavily, because if you look at that page 88 and just look at all of the water-conserving elements, they're not going to be in what you're being asked. you're being asked to pass, just as the Green Building Code. So I would recommend, at a minimum, that, and encourage you, to go with Option 2, which would be to further research this, to look at the options in Tier 1, where we have a good balance of very good policy and some reasonable cost-saving benefits. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Alec Bartrousov?
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Alec Bartrousov. I'm the founder of the Coalition for Green Glendale. I'm on the steering committee for the two community gardens on Monterey, and I was also one of the members for the task force. I'm also now a graduate student at UCLA in the urban planning program. I'm here to express my dissatisfaction with Option 1, and I hope that you seriously consider Option 2. And the reason I don't support Option 1 is because I want to see some proactive measures take place here in the city of Glendale. Far too long, we've been considering only standards that are being imposed from the state of California. And I'd like to point out, the City of Glendale website, it's a city-run website, that's And truly, it's an insult to the public, because all of the topics that are mentioned on that website are imposed by the state of California. So as Stephanie said, I'd like to see the City of Glendale be a leader and not a follower. We have cities like Pasadena, West Hollywood, Santa Monica, that's perfect examples for us, and I hope that we will follow in their footsteps. And I was also on the Subcommittee for the Water Conservation section of the Green Building Code, and I'm glad that Stephanie brought that up. The additional costs for Tier 1 are really negligible. The only thing that it asks for are additional, or an increase in plumbing fixture efficiencies, which is really negligible. These are aerators that go on the showers and the sinks. And then there was another issue of evapotransportation in landscaping. And I have to admit that everybody in the Subcommittee had no idea what evapotranspiration was, and I wanted to point that out to you. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. Mr. Quintero?
I would like a list of the participants in the task force, by the way.
It's in there.
Oh, it is? It's deep.
All three meetings.
And I couldn't find page 88.
The pages are out of order, but it's in there.
Mr. Weaver?
I'll make my comments. I support Option 2, but I thoroughly understand, especially with my background, that we're moving into new territory. We've never had it mandated before, green technology, where we're going. Want to go slow, because we do not know what costs that we potentially are incurring for the residents and the businesses in the city by any standards we put on. We don't even know yet the costs of the CalGreen, what that's going to put on us. I do support the Option 2 with the solar ready, because we have talked about solar panels, whatever, in Glendale, and the least we can do is plum structures with the conduits, whatever, make sure the outlets on the roof, the ventings, are in locations that in the future, if we decide to mandate it, the cost has been greatly reduced on new buildings, because we have put the conduit in and made the provisions for the additional add-ons. And the second is closing that hole in the residential. Again, that's loophole that'll probably be closed, but I think we could do that now. Neither one of these is high-cost items, but goes further than what the state has done. My belief is, in going slow, is because technology is continuing to advance. We see that all the time. We're going to, we have advances in electric and water. We're going to find new ways to generate electricity. We already are. New technologies are evolving. Same with water. I believe that someday we will be finding much cheaper ways to take water from the oceans, purify it, and deliver it. That's a whole different system. And even within, with the new technologies on construction materials, construction techniques, and we're talking about, like the Disney childcare, they're using earthen walls, which were used 3,000 years ago, but haven't been used for hundreds of years now. Things like that are coming along, and if we put too much burden on the person, on the people now, before we really get a handle, we could have problems. I'll give two examples, one that has been corrected and one that isn't corrected yet, toilets. When, I think most of us have 1.6-gallon toilets now. When they first came out, they didn't work. You had to flush a couple times to get it to work. The reason, the designers simply decreased the size of the bowl, but the hydraulics of operation on the smaller amount of water down made them inefficient, they didn't work. About a year and a half later, they corrected that, and now virtually everybody is using those tanks when they buy them, because they do work now. But if you had mandated it when they first came out, you'd have found a lot more toilets sitting up in the landfill, and a lot more people very irritated, that you moved too fast on the standards. Another one that's still in the work, I've thought about in the past, is ground moisture detectors. You stick it in the ground, it tells you whether to turn the sprinklers on or not. Well, if you put the sensor in the shade, it's going to give you one reading. If you put it in the sun, it gives a different reading. So how do you set up a system of sensors that will function correctly for areas in the shade and areas in the sun? I doubt if any gardeners know how to do that yet. The system doesn't exist yet. It's a good idea, but let the technology evolve before you put it on. So those two examples, so when you talk about putting everything on, let's put Tier 1 on, let's put Tier 2. Nobody in this world has costed out what those impacts are on the consumer, resident that has a house, or on the commercial. Times are tough enough as it is. Putting in the mandatory and adding a couple of things that don't necessarily put a lot of burden on the consumer, I think are worth doing. You can recess every single year down the line as we go, as technology evolves. So that's why I'm in.
So you're suggesting Tier, Option 2, come back with a CalGreen minimum, but the other bells and whistles and costs are out?
And the other two, the solar, plumbing for future solar, and two, closing that loophole on the residential that Mr. Tom talked about. A hole in there, but the high-rise residential is not covered. I think the state will add it, but we'd just be ahead of the curve doing it.
Would you be willing to let staff go through a list of options, aside from those two, the solar and the four-to-eight story?
Yeah, I think the staff was involved in those technical meetings with the, where Stephanie was talking about, and were aware, and I think staff's recommendations are in line with what they were hearing, what came out of the technical meetings. Is that about right, Stephanie? And Stephanie?
There is a summary attached to your report.
Which I read.
Right, and there were a couple of other items. There was strong interest in going, as Mike Fortney mentioned, going to 15% better than Title 24 standards.
But what does that cost?
There is a report that costs out the life cycle costs and the upfront costs, called the Climate 9 Study, that's attached to your report. That is the one piece that we do have some costs on.
I'm just wondering, recovery time, how many years out are you talking?
That's also included in the report, the payback time. I can find that for you.
I didn't read, believe me, I didn't read this whole thing. Some of the payback have to be in the years, if not the decades.
Right, and depending on the building type, the report that was attached went through six, four of which were residential, two were commercial. To give an example, the cost to do 15% of Title 24 for a single-family, small home is about $1,200 to $1,700, and the payback for that would be 15 years.
15 years.
Whereas, on a high-rise office building, the total cost to exceed Title 24 by 15% is between $40,000 and $88,000, and the return on that would be 4.6 years. And every other building type was in between those two.
And these are estimates?
Yes, this is all from that report. Excuse me, these are all estimates, that's right.
I'm just more comfortable with the two, because I just don't know where we are going with technology and costs. Last thing I want is to see developers, homeowners in here complaining, you've just added all this additional cost onto me. Didn't you know what you were doing? Well, I don't know, maybe my colleagues do. That's why I'm trying to go slow. I don't think putting conduit into the design of a building for future solar costs much. Putting the vents on the roof in the right locations, so you can put panels, I don't think costs much. That's why I support it. Including a loophole, include high-rise residential, I don't think is costing.
If I could, I agree. And we felt that exceeding Title 24 by 15% was probably one of the most costly, if not the most costly, item in a Tier 1 option.
And I'm not interested in that.
But there are a number of options that have very minimal cost to them. If your interest is in going through the checklist, I think that's what I'd heard, if your interest is to go through the checklist and to pick off the things that don't cost much, such as solar ready, we could come back to you with that.
If staff wants to come back with some of those that are low-cost, because, you know, just, times are tough. We start putting these mandatory things on without having explored it thoroughly, does concern me. So checklist of some of the low-cost ones, yeah. I'd like to hear staff's, what they say.
Ms. Friedman?
Only if Mr. Weaver's finished.
Yeah, I'm done. I've talked long enough.
While you're there, Mr. Fortney, let me ask you a question about something you just said. You said that the average cost for a single-family residence was $1,200 to $1,500. Was that average cost of CalGreen basic, or CalGreen Tier 1?
Thank you for asking. Two clarifications, if you would. The average cost for a small, single-family home, that's a 2,025-square-foot house, $1,200 to $1,700, $42. It is, that's not the cost for CalGreen minimum, nor is it the cost for CalGreen Tier 1. What it is, is the cost of exceeding Title 24 by 15%.
Which you had said was about average to the Tier 1, the CalGreen Tier 1?
Exactly, that's one of the items.
So assuming it's going to be a pretty equivalent.
If you adopted all of Tier 1, CalGreen, there's going to be more costs associated than just this, but that would be exactly the cost for the Title 24.
Around $1,200 to $1,500. And that's for a new house?
Yes, a brand-new 2,000 square foot.
So what is the average construction cost to construct, forget the land cost, but to construct a brand-new 2,500-square-foot house right now?
You know, my experience is really multifamily, and I can tell you, it's about $150 a square foot. I really couldn't tell you in this city what it would cost to build.
Does anyone have, anyone out there, Mr. Todd?
Stuart, be the closest.
For a 2,500-square-foot home?
I think that was the example that Mr. Fortney was basing his $1,200 to $1,500?
2,025. Best estimate is about $100 a square foot, so $225,000.
So $225,000, and we're talking now $1,200 to $1,500 additional. So what, is anyone good enough in math to tell me what percentage of your raising that budget?
Small.
One-half of 1%.
So one-half of 1% to go to the Tier 1. Okay. I just want to be sure I'm understanding the implications of this. Okay.
If I might clarify, staff went through all of the Tier 1 options with the task force, and there were only a few items that the task force had strong interest in, and those are included in the summary.
I'll make my comments, if you like.
Well, first of all, I'm very glad to see this coming forward. I'm glad that we're having this discussion. The lack of proactive green policies in Glendale was one of the reasons that I ran for office, something that's extremely important to me. I'm glad that the state is taking the lead with CalGreen. I think it's a very good alternative to lead. I think that it's a wonderful thing that the state is really going to be a leader in terms of the country with green building standards. But I would like to see us do more. I'm glad that members of the public came today to speak. I'm glad that we had two people who were on the task force who expressed their interest in transcending the basic state requirement, because that's really what Option Number 1 is. It's basically saying, Glendale will do nothing. We'll just let the state, we'll just follow along with the state, which we have no choice but to do anyway. So I do think that we should do more. You know, tonight, we're having a discussion about water rates. It's a really difficult subject. No one wants to go into tonight's meeting, believe me. And people ask all the time, they say, "Well, why do I have to conserve water when we're allowing growth, when more people are moving here and we're building new buildings?" And, you know, there's not a lot of answers to that. One answer is that we're very limited in terms of city government about what we can and can't allow. It's not that easy to just say, "All right, no more building, whoever bought property, you're just out of luck." It's almost impossible legally, I think. But the other answer is to require strong building standards, so that whatever impacts are created by growth, by new residents, by new businesses, is mitigated by those buildings being energy-efficient. That's really, in a lot of ways, the only thing we can do in the city, to mitigate the inevitable growth that's going to happen in California. So I think it's very important that we do that, particularly with water. And I'm glad that Ms. Landrigan came to bring that to our attention, that a lot of the water-saving options are not mandated in the basic CalGreen. I would like to see us adopt Option 2, and to go back and have the task force take a very serious look, not just at a few of what's the lowest cost, but I'd like them to look at what's going to make the biggest impact, and also to look at the option of allowing the builder themselves to make the choices of Tier 1. And we don't have to decide it's going to be X, Y, and Z from Tier 1. We could say, you have to adopt, let's say, the water savings, and another 10%, you pick. I mean, we could give them that flexibility, so that's another option. But I think that the task force, you know, I'm grateful for them for taking the time to sit down and try to hash some of this out, and I would like to ask them to do it again, and to go back and take a really hard look, to see what can be done. One and one-half percent of a budget increase for a new single-family does not seem unreasonable to me. And it's interesting that the bigger the building and the bigger the cost, the faster the payback. So for those developers that are building to flip a large property, well, of course, they're not going to want to do this, because it adds to their upfront cost, but to those who are going to operate this, or those who are going to purchase those buildings, that not only are they going to see a payback, but they're going to see a substantial savings over time. So I think that once the builders understand that, there'll be a lot less reluctance on their part to go along with this. I would think, if, I mean, financially, unless I'm missing something, you want to do this, because if you're going to own your building for 10 years, or sell it to someone who plans on owning it for 10 years, you're going to save money by doing this. In terms of remodels, I would like to see this be used as a way to start upgrading some of our remodels. So we need to, I'd like us to look into that. However, I want to be certain that we don't penalize people who are doing additions and remodels and upgrading their homes, and making it so cost prohibitive on those people, because they live in old houses that are hard to retrofit, maybe, so that we don't make their projects impossible. Now, I don't know whether we put a cap on the amount of money people are putting into their renovation, or if we do it on a case-by-case basis and say, you know, because of the way this house was built in 1910, it's really going to be impossible to redo the plumbing, so, you know, you get a pass. I don't know how we accomplish that. But we can't burden people who own single-family homes, so that they aren't able to maintain and renovate their homes. But if there's ways that we can help them make their homes more energy and water efficient, we should definitely do that. Definitely, we need to fill the gap. I would also like us to look at new, large, single-family homes as being in a different tier. Because if you're going to build an extra-large house, if you're going to build an 8,000, a 9,000, I don't know what the threshold is, but if you're going to build a monster house in Glendale and use a monster share of the resources, I think that you owe it to the public to make sure that you mitigate your impact. So I would like us to take a look at these extra-large, you know, kind of oversized residential homes, as having to be at a higher standard than the sort of normal-size homes. Again, I don't know what that number is, or what that threshold is, but I think that the task force can probably come up with some suggestions on that. the task force can probably come up with some suggestions on that. I'm a little bit worried about how we're going to do the compliance. I don't, I'd like to see a way that we don't have to spend a lot of staff time and money trying to make sure that people are compliant. I don't know whether we can just sort of, Building and Safety can sign off on what they're doing, you know, you've got the right plumbing, you've got the right this, you've got the right that. But I think that we need to take a look at that at some point. It was interesting to me to see that one of the recommendations was to hire a consultant if we were going to go with this option number two. Because as far back as I've been on this council, as far as I can remember, I've been asking for a discussion about hiring at the city a green officer, a sustainability person, independent of all the other city departments, who has authority over the city, who can take the lead on not only making our city government sustainable, but also, and someone who has experience and training in this field, and to coordinate what we're doing at the city level so that our city can be an example to the residents, something I'm still not seeing, I think, enough, but also could have really been the lead on the task force and educating them. I don't know what happened to that request. I don't know why it never came back. But I would like to see, if we're going to hire a consultant for this group, let that discussion, let's discuss that, whether that hiring someone, or even having a consultant, that's sort of a consultant that we put on for a year, I think that person's salary would be paid back in cost savings from upgrading our buildings and making all of our departments run more efficiently. But let's at least discuss that before we go out and hire a consultant now and maybe hire someone else next year. Let's try to look at this more cohesively. Let me just see if I had any other notes. I guess those are my thoughts. I am very glad to see this come forward. I do think that this, we owe it to the people of Glendale to do this. I think it will result ultimately in cost savings for builders. The technology will evolve, but that'll just make it easier, not more difficult for compliance. And particularly with water, I think we really need to get serious about conservation and make sure that if you're building in Glendale, you're building the most energy and water-efficient building you can build. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Okay. I'll be very quick because I don't think, need to repeat anything. Mr. Mayor, first of all, I want to thank Ms. Landrigan, and I also want to thank Alec. It's good to see both of you again, and thank you for staying on sustainability in Glendale on the issue. I'm glad this has come back. So let me be very quick. For me, it's option two with elements of option one. The elements are the list. And I would like to echo what Ms. Friedman said regarding the, taking another look to make sure that the, that some of the options that would help us in the future are included, that they are included. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
I'm very happy we're moving forward with this. I want to thank the staff. I think you did a great job in putting this report together and organizing the task force. The task force is totally representative of Glendale in the sense that from architects to developers to nonprofits, homeowner associations, former DRB members, affordable housing providers, including Habitat for Humanity. So I think you certainly put the right people together. So I also support option two, and I definitely want to consider some of the tier one options, including infill rehabs and adding the high-rise residential. Remodeling is going to be more complicated, obviously, the age of the house, how much square footage, what exactly is being done in the remodel, but I think we can work through some of those details. But in terms of the commercial viability, in terms of the cost and so forth, I don't remember when it was, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, I attended a airport conference, a national airport conference, and one of the seminars had to do with sustainability and renewable energy, et cetera, et cetera. And it was striking in terms of what airports are doing. And airports are in a very tough business. There's less passenger travel, there's less income, et cetera. Yet, without a question, without a question, airports across the country, and by the way, sometimes terminals are owned by airlines, not necessarily owned by the airport. Whether it's owned by an airline or owned by an airport, there's no question that all of the measures that they've taken have worked really well. And when I say worked really well, I mean it's worked to the bottom line. It has more than paid off. So I want to make that point. A few months ago, or maybe last year, I forget, had another conference, listening to some very hard business people who build high-rises, who build malls, et cetera, et cetera. That seminar pointed out, once again, the amount of money that these companies are saving. And it's not just a few bucks that they're saving, but I mean a lot of money. And so there's no question that financially, this makes sense. So whether you're a green person or not a green person, whether you want to save the earth or not save the earth, the bottom line is, in dollars and cents, it makes sense to do this. And I'm glad we're moving in this direction. Of course, the state is moving in this direction, but I personally don't think that it's going to hold back development of any sort, and it's going to work very well for the property owners that are going to be subject to these standards.
Mr. Freeman?
Well, I just want to know if we could see a show of hands of those that do not want to save the earth.
A lot of people, right. A lot of people think the earth doesn't need saving, but...
Okay. Mr. Mincy or Laura, any comments?
No.
I'm in favor of option two. I think if those cost estimates that Mr. Fortney put out are correct, I mean, they're almost too good to be true. I mean, they're extremely low in relation to the cost of the building. So I'd like to come back. I guess the proposal is to run it through the task force again, sort of button down some of those options, and then bring it back to council and the agency and the housing authority to review them and review the costs and everything else. I got a sustainable city email alert yesterday, and I understood that a city, I think it was Portland or another city in Oregon, where they have approved the placing of wind turbines for sustainable energy on rooftops. So I'd like to look into that as well. I mean, if we're going to go for this, we can't say, well, we want, you know, we want to be green, but not that green. So something like that where, as an alternative to solar, for those residences that do not have the configuration or the orientation for solar, and these are, I understand, small, compact, I'm sure you're familiar with it, compact-style turbines, we'll have to justify and reconcile the fact we don't let air conditioners on the roof, but we let wind turbines, but I'm sure we can do that. So I guess my point is, as we discuss these things, Mr. Weaver or Mr. Freeman mentioned there is technology that is moving forward as we speak. So be sure to bring, between now and next month, or 60 days when this comes back, keep us up to date on these new technologies that may be incorporated into both our policy as well as perhaps some zoning issues and land use issues as well. Mr. Weaver?
If Ms. Landrigan is correct, she said most of the task force members did not understand clearly what was being talked, you know, you don't have to come back.
We were just, we spent a lot of time bringing people up to speed.
Okay. I'm just wondering, most of the effort ought to be by staffers who do have more knowledge of it, rather than sending it back to the task force, which will have to be educated before they can agree or not agree.
And the only point I have on that is, looking through that task force, it looked like there were some contractors and developers who maybe have a better, I mean, when they talk about the, you know, the insulation scale and the SEER units and the 80% AFUE, I don't know what that means.
Neither do I.
But maybe they can give some input as well and make sure that we're not placing either excessive costs or too little costs on these estimates.
You've got a good point. Only other thing I'd like to say, Mr. Mayor, is that when I built my swimming pool in 1979, I put solar panels on a patio roof to heat that pool. I can heat my pool to at least 95 degrees. No heater, never used the heater. Back when I finally did use the heater, or tried to, it was rusted out, a mouse was living inside of it. Solar panels did do the job, but that was 20 panels. Today, how many panels do you think I'd need to use now? The efficiency, the technology has developed so far, and it's evolving so much faster now with the federal government, everybody pushing this new technology. I wonder who created the word "green"? Somebody out there, somewhere, sometime, had to start calling it "green." It sure caught on, didn't it?
That's a good point.
What were you going to say, Mr. Green?
I was just going to say, you asked a question. I was going to say.
We have a point of order that takes precedence over further discussion or debate. Point of order, Mr. Freeman.
That's actually a question for my colleagues, which is, I think we've given a lot of really clear direction, but do we have any consensus on asking the task force to look at making a higher standard for the larger residential, for what I would call the monster house amendment?
Absolutely.
I want to see costs. I won't vote for anything unless I see the impact to the consumer.
So, but at least they could come back with some suggestions.
They can come back, but I'm not going to penalize any resident or any building owner in this city about knowing the impacts to them. I'm not going to have them calling me and says, do you know what you did to us? And I stand there and say, no, I didn't. Inform me.
Someone like to make a motion, then?
It's giving direction. Have we given direction?
What are we doing?
The council's motion is providing direction.
If they give direction, if they have it, they don't need a motion.
I have been trying to capture your direction, and in the motion as drafted, we have...
Do you need a motion?
Three options, and I've been trying to capture your direction during your discussion. And what I believe you're directing at this point, if I can, see if I can capture it, is to draft the necessary legislation to adopt the California Green Building Code mandatory standards, and direct staff to meet with the task force to conduct additional study on tier one options as directed by the city council, and return to the council redevelopment agency and housing authority for further review and direction on same. Well, it would also be to expand the scope of what Cal Green applies to, so that it applies to all building.
The three-to-eight-story gap?
And that was where I was trying to capture, as directed by council.
That's all in there.
That's included in there.
With those points, the solar ready, the five-story gap, the gap on the multifamily housing.
That sounds like it, and report back in five years.
Okay. Is that your motion, Mr. Weaver?
So moved, or seconded by Mr. Quintero.
Do we have an option, though, of adopting at least the Cal Green minimum right now?
No, that's mandatory.
Not until January?
Cal Green goes into effect on January.
January. If we adopted it now, when would it go into effect?
January.
It's still going to affect January. Oh, okay.
Mr. Tom, today's Sunday, November.
Never mind then.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Here in the drawing.
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn for council?
So moved.
Council's adjourned.
Is there a second for the council adjourn?
Second.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn for the redevelopment agency?
So moved.
Second.
The redevelopment agency is adjourned.
Motion to adjourn for the housing authority.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks.
Adjourn.
Okay. Our remaining meeting is the special meeting of the Glendale City Council.